Dr. Grandy, we are now live on YouTube.
Thank you. Good evening. I now call the April 13th meeting of the Wallingford Swarthmore School Board to order. In opening, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I will leave that with other board members for now muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to start this evening with a roll call, so I'd like to start by asking Ms. Klingerman to conduct that roll call for us.
Good evening. I'd like to take attendance by roll call. When I call your name, please respond by saying present. Mr. Ballas. Mr. Ballas.
I'd like to remind everybody their microphone might be.
Jerry Ballas, present.
Thank you, Mr. Balls. Ms. Semino.
Present.
Dr. Downey.
Present.
Dr. Huff.
Present.
Mr. Cutis.
Present.
Mrs. Lentz.
Present.
Mr. Orsetti.
Present.
Mrs. Walkman.
Present.
Dr. Grandy.
Present.
And Mr. Berman, our solicitor.
I am also present. Thank you.
Superintendent Palmer.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have nine full voting members this evening. I want to start out our meeting this evening. Obviously, these are unusual circumstances and so we need to begin by addressing few board policies that allow us to conduct our meeting remotely this evening. So due to the current health crisis and the governor's closure order, all members of the Wallingford Swarthmore School District, Board of School Directors will be participating remotely. However, the board's policies impose some requirements for remote participation that are inconsistent with the governor's order. Therefore pursuant to Board Policy 003 is the first order of business. I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, allows for electronic participation by any medium meeting the listed criteria, but then incorporates a procedure to require participation by telephone. Therefore, I move that for this meeting, the word telephone be removed from all occurrences in the policy. Similarly, the district is technologically unable to broadcast this meeting live through its normal cable outlets when using the current remote technology. Therefore, also within Policy 006.1, I move to remove cable television feed from the definition of electronic means and replace it with YouTube livestream feed. And then finally, Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move to suspend language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, I move to change the language in the section titled Public Participation from District Residents or Taxpayers Present at a Meeting of the School Board to District Residents or Taxpayers Participating Remotely at a Meeting of the School Board. Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
Could someone state their name with a second?
Jerry Ballas, second.
Thank you, Jerry. And so, Mrs. Klingerman, could we take a roll call vote?
Yes. When casting your vote this evening, I'd ask that you please respond by saying aye, nay, or abstain. Mr. Ballas, how do you vote?
Ballas votes yea.
Ms. Semino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Downey.
Michelle Downey, yea.
Dr. Huff.
Marilyn Huff, aye.
Mr. Cutis.
Lawrence Cutis, aye.
Mrs. Lentz.
Jennifer Lentz, aye.
Mr. Orsetti.
Damon Orsetti, aye.
And Mrs. Walkman.
Kelly Walkman, aye.
And Dr. Grandy.
David Grandy, aye.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion passes nine to zero. So it's worth repeating at this point in our meeting that under the procedures we're using for this meeting in which the suspensions now permit, members of the public wishing to address the board have been and continue to be encouraged to call 610-892-3470. And again, I'll repeat that, 610-892-3470. The extension is 1102. And you can use that number to leave a recorded comment for the board, subject to a three-minute time limit. The comments that were left before 5:00 PM today have been transcribed and available to the board, and we will acknowledge them at the appropriate times during the meeting. Comments left after 5:00 PM but prior to the end of the meeting will still be transcribed, distributed to the board, and made a part of the record, but will not be acknowledged during the meeting this evening. So with that, before we move on to the superintendent's report, I did want to say just a few words in opening our meeting this evening. You know, our community and our children are going through an unprecedented challenge right now. The COVID-19 pandemic has really turned lives upside down in ways frankly none of us could have imagined even recently. And the world is reeling and so is our own community. This past week, we learned that the governor ordered all schools to remain closed for the remainder of the academic year. And I think I speak for most of us to say this was truly heartbreaking. I'd hope we could put that decision off a little longer, but we have to deal with this reality today. Many of us are grieving in many different ways. Some of us have family members whose health has been impacted by COVID. Some of us have family members working on the front lines during the pandemic. And all of our kids have had so many things they deeply value canceled or postponed. And frankly, it's all very difficult and very challenging. Our high school seniors are of course at the top of all of our minds. High school graduation and all of the accompanying activities are an opportunity to recognize the achievements of our senior class, and I'm sure many of our seniors feel devastated. We are thinking of all of you and I'm confident with some creativity, we can find a way to honor our seniors. Shifting to remote instruction has been an enormous challenge and change for all of us. Our administrators and teachers have worked tirelessly to stand up remote instruction. Dr. Palmer sent out a survey to all district families on Thursday to get feedback on the initial two-week period. We will continue to make changes based on your feedback, so if you have not responded yet, please do so. I know that remote instruction is a challenge for our families, whether it be supporting your own kids' education, managing technology, or finding ways to keep our children socially connected. None of this is easy, but everyone is working very hard to do the best job possible. We have a very strong community and the board is committed to working with our administrators, our teachers, and all of our staff to support the district's efforts to do the very best we can to support our kids and support our community during these very difficult times. We have to rely on one another now more than ever. And I want to thank everyone that has volunteered in many ways to support our community. And I also want to thank our administrators, staff, all of our teachers for working around the clock. And so when I say thank you, I truly mean it from the bottom of my heart. So with that, I do want to transition to our superintendent's report and ask Dr. Palmer to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grandy. And tonight I have a number of items to speak about this evening. First, I'd like to comment on items on our agenda this evening. We have not had a board meeting since the special meeting of March 12th, so tonight's agenda is longer than usual. Some items to note. Under the personnel section, you will see a number of retirements. And even though we have not physically been in our buildings, we have been interviewing candidates to fill vacancies that will be created by these retirements. Therefore, you'll also see the start of our appointments for the 2020-2021 school year. Under the finance section, you will notice the acceptance of two school safety and security grant awards. The first is a meritorious grant award. This is the second year that the state of Pennsylvania approved funds for safety and security of school districts. The Wallingford Swarthmore School District qualified for $40,000 of grant funding. This money will continue our electronic lockset project. The second is a competitive grant award. WSSD qualified for $195,000 of grant funding, which will be used to support our mental health services. These services will focus on trauma-invested practices and will include training and coaching for our behavioral health staff as well as some direct service to our students. Also under the finance section is a recommendation for WSSD to refinance our general obligation bonds, Series 2012A with the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority, also known as DELVAL. To refresh everyone's memory, at our February 24th board meeting, Brad Remig, the Managing Director of PFM Financial Advisors, presented an overview of a bond refunding opportunity that was allowable under a parameters resolution issued by the board back in October of 2017. Since our February meeting, the bond market has been quite volatile with wide fluctuations. In the meantime, a different opportunity has now become available. The DELVAL has a bond pool program. And by refinancing our 2012 bonds with DELVAL, the district will actually save more money than what Mr. Remig originally presented in February. Tonight's board action would initiate the application process. And then at the April 27th board meeting, the board would authorize the DELVAL resolution to finalize the refinancing process with settlement occurring by the first week of June. Now moving beyond our agenda, I and our township and borough managers would like to remind everyone to complete the 2020 census if you have not already done so. Counting every one of our residents, including non-citizens, is critically important to all of us. You being counted impacts everything from how many representatives Pennsylvanians will have in Congress to the amount of federal funding we receive for our schools, police, fire, and countless other public services. Please stand up and be counted. You should have received a letter from the U.S. Census Bureau. But if you have not done so, please fill it out and return it. Alternatively, you can complete your census form electronically or print a paper form, which you can obtain at the census website at 2020census, I'm sorry, 2020census.gov. It will only take you 10 minutes of your time to complete this. Now, a few words about our food service program. On Sunday, March 29th, the Pennsylvania Department of Education received approval from the USDA for a waiver to grant flexibility to the eligibility requirements to qualify as a food service open site. And an open site is one where all children 18 and under in the community receive free meals. On March 30th, the next day, WSSD became eligible and received approval to participate in this program under the waiver. On April 2nd, at 10:00 AM, our food service vendor, The Nutrition Group, started providing meals to our children, whether they attended our school district or they were just from our area. In less than 72 hours, The Nutrition Group served 2,736 meals to 342 children at the Strathhaven Middle School site. We are serving 300 children on average per day since we started the program on April 2nd. Our program operates from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from the Brookhaven Road entrance of now Strathhaven High School. Breakfast and lunch meals are available to all children 18 years and under. This program is not limited to children who are WSSD students. All children are able to receive 14 meals in total per week. If you'd like to learn more about this program, we ask you to visit our website under the COVID-19 tab. And if you would like to participate, we ask you to pre-register for the program so we can accurately assess the number of meals we need to prepare. On a related note, on Friday, April 3rd, as I was listening to the governor's press briefing, he requested that individuals wear face masks as an added level of protection when folks leave their homes. My mind immediately went to our essential staff, including our food service department, who would now need face masks. Since face masks were nearly impossible to come by, I reached out to Strathhaven High School family and consumer science teacher Candy Perry to see if she could assist. Fortunately for us, Candy had seen that some of her former students, her former sowers, and some community members were making masks. And thanks to their generosity, they made some for us. We are so appreciative of the kindness and generosity of our community in keeping us and everyone we come in contact with safe. I am sending a heartfelt virtual hug to everyone who made masks for us. We could not be doing what we are doing without you. On April 9th, I wrote to our parents and I would like to share that communication with our entire community at this time. So dear Wallingford Swarthmore community, I am sure by now you have heard that Governor Wolf has closed schools through the end of the school year. Like so many of our WSSD families, I am profoundly saddened by the loss of the last months of the school year for our students and families. These are the precious times when students begin to prepare for their next school year and say goodbye to their teachers, classmates, and in some cases, buildings as they are moving into the summer months and on to the next phase of their education. Our vibrant learning community is more than just academics, especially at the end of the school year as we hold field days, music ensemble performances, spring sports, class trips, yearbook signing, and award ceremonies. I am especially heartbroken for our seniors and their families who have been waiting 12 years for these final months when the class of 2020 enjoys the rewards of all of their hard work. Senior Awards Night, senior prom, commemoration, and a graduation ceremony that no student should ever have to miss. As a school district, we are determined to do our very best to find alternate ways to celebrate these milestones for our seniors. We have been considering many items along the way. However, now that the governor has made the determination to close schools, we are forming an immediate committee to begin specific planning. No option is off the table to commemorate our seniors as they leave WSSD for bright and promising futures. This amazing group of students deserve to be honored in a special way, and we intend to do just that. There are many questions that continue to evolve through a pandemic that has taken so much away from our school community. Our virtual learning is ever-evolving in scope and philosophy. And as we continue to improve on this new version of student learning, we will work together to answer the questions as they come. Your responses to our feedback survey will help us greatly as we consider in more depth student progress, expectations of work, support for student health and well-being, the continuation of meals to families, the school calendar, and many more considerations. These incredible circumstances are not in our control, but we want you to be confident that our team will continue to work toward creative solutions and to provide you with updates and information as soon as they become available. Every student, parent, educator, staff member, and administrator makes a difference in how we respond to this next phase of our work together. I believe our community ideals will be reflected in all we do to provide safe, caring, compassionate, and quality interactions for our kids. In our community, there are those who may be caring for sick family members and who have suffered many types of losses in this pandemic. Our hearts go out to all of our WSSD families in crisis. Know that we are with you in hope and communion. As we take a deep breath and ready ourselves for the next few weeks, please remember our WSSD spirit is what makes us the community we are and always have been. And I have no doubt we will show our enduring spirit even in this. Sincerely, Lisa Palmer, Superintendent of Schools. And before I close, I would like to express my appreciation to our parents for their patience, understanding, and support as we work to shift to flexible online learning. To our students for their resiliency and enduring enthusiasm. To our awesome faculty, administration, and staff for doing their very best for our students, our families, and for each other. To our school board for supporting all of us and for their unending words of encouragement. To our municipal colleagues for continued partnership and support. And to our tireless first responders and medical professionals for their selfless service. Thank you for everything you are doing to support all of us in our wonderful WSSD community. I, we appreciate it. Dr. Grandy, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. I do have a board announcement this evening. The board met prior to this meeting in executive session to discuss contract negotiations. In addition, since our last special board meeting on March 12th, Dr. Palmer has provided remote informational briefings to the board about the current pandemic and the district's response. So with that, let's move to our focus topic for this evening. And we have one focus topic, which is an update on remote flexible instruction. And so, Dr. Palmer, will you please introduce our presenter?
I will. I went long and long on my superintendent's comments, but the area that I did not include was information on our flexible instruction. So tonight, we have Dr. Denise Cittarelli-Jones with us. She is our Director of Curriculum, and she is going to provide us with a behind-the-scenes look on what we did to get to where we are with our flexible instruction plan. It was no easy effort to get to where we are, and I think she will take us through to give us all a better understanding of how we got to where we are. So Denise, the screen is yours.
And just very quick, Denise, before you start, I want to remind board members that as Denise goes through her presentation, if you have a question, you can use the raise hand feature here, and I will try to call on you and interject so we can try to manage the multiple participants. So thank you, Denise.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you. And we can get started on this flexible instruction for WSSD, a behind-the-scenes look. So good evening to the WSSD community and the school board. I hope you are all staying safe. And I hope you're all finding ways to keep your spirits up during these extraordinary times. Tonight, I'm going to be taking you through a behind-the-scenes look at the development of our flexible instruction plan as well as the supports that have been put in place for our students and families in this time of crisis. We first heard of the possibility of a school closure on March 9th, but we had yet to learn for how long and when it would begin. We knew our first priority was to put together a team to consider access to technology, learning platforms for lessons, a plan for teacher collaboration, the safety of the students, the security of the buildings, and how to communicate it all. You're going to hear me say the word collaboration quite a bit tonight. It has been through an extensive amount of collaborative work that our teams of teachers and staff members and administrators have been able to develop and with the help of parents, implement distance learning and wellness supports for our students. We simply could not have done this in isolation. It took everyone. So one day later, on March 10th, we had a viable plan in place for teacher collaboration sessions across all grade levels and in all subject areas with guidelines in place for what instruction should look like based on standards and essential learning outcomes. Special education directors added important details for modification and adherence to IEPs and GIEPs and 504s. And an ad hoc team for technology continued to pull tech resources and platforms online. On that day, we announced that Friday, March 13th, would be the in-service day for that teacher planning and collaboration. The biggest complication at that time was not knowing which day the closure would begin and for how long. That meant teams of teachers planning lessons with unspecified dates and duration in mind. Without dates, it is difficult to know which lesson to plan for next. But our teaching staff, they rose to the challenge for sure, despite that whole unknown element. So putting plans together that could be adapted once we had more information from Governor Wolf could be a little bit tricky, but we did it. Late in the afternoon of March 13th, just as teachers were closing down their collaboration sessions and getting ready to leave, the governor announced that schools would be closed for two weeks, starting Monday, and that reviewing and maintaining skills would be the goal of those two weeks, not new learning. Unfortunately, many of the plans that teachers had been working on were for new learning, which meant the plans they had just made would need to be adjusted to now reflect review and maintenance only. And it had to be ready to post by Monday morning. So our teachers rose to the challenge again, and they made the adjustments over the weekend with the plan to post. On March 16th, the review and maintenance two-week window began. Students and their parents could access the teachers' suggested practice resources. And our parents, they also rose to the challenge. Where needed, our amazing parents engaged their kids with learning games. They did online education videos. They planned outside activities. They did math practice. There was so much reading going on, and they asked lots and lots and lots of questions about how they could best support their kids. And many, many parents were doing this while working either at their job or at home, taking care of their households, caring for sick family members, and worrying, like all of us, about what was coming next for our country. During the first week of review and maintenance, I started to think about the next phase of student learning. And my thinking led me to this idea of flexible instruction. That is actually a term that the state uses for lesson plans that can take place on district snow days. So I started thinking about that, and I asked myself, what could flexible instruction look like in WSSD for an extended period of time, not just for a snow day or two? How could teachers collaborate on an ongoing basis from the distance? How much work should be given each week? How much work should be given each day? What platforms were already in place to use for online learning and which would have to be discovered? Also, what were the roles and responsibilities of the teachers and the students and the parents? And then what was our philosophy? And what would that philosophy look like at each grade? It was a lot to wrap my brain around. But once I had a first draft under my belt, the WSSD administration of 17 members worked in small and large groups to perfect that document. After over 15 hours of distance meetings and writing and rewriting and rewriting, the 18-page flexible instruction plan was ready to go. And with it was a companion document for the teachers, specifically for them only. And that included expectations of what we began to call collaborative planning sessions. And that's where grade levels and content area departments K-12 come together and plan each and every week. Also during the weeks of review and maintenance, teachers began to shift what they already knew about instructional technology, which is basically what they know from classroom use, right? To instructional technology for teaching and learning in crisis mode. That's different. That's where online platforms and webpages now cross the distance between teacher and student every single day. So teachers began to prep their lessons. They started building webpages. They asked 1,000 questions, and they researched options, really for hours on end. They posted it in Google Hangouts and Google Classrooms for sharing and collaboration remotely. In anticipation of the following week, teachers also prepared additional review and maintenance lessons. But these were more specific to targeted learning outcomes of our district curriculum. So when I say targeted, I'm referring to the learning outcomes that pick up where we left off, where we left off on March 13th in the district's learning sequence. These are not exercises that support a general review of skills, but targeted. So on Monday, March 23rd, the flexible instruction plan was shared with the WSSD community, staff, and faculty for launch the following week. With the guidance of the plan, teacher leaders set up weekly collaboration planning sessions that will continue now for the rest of the year. These sessions include special education and gifted teachers for ongoing support to students with modifications and enrichment activities, support for reading, writing, math, and social emotional needs. And administrators attend a significant number of these sessions as well for ongoing direction and support. We don't want any decisions being made in isolation. Support plans were also formed for our English language learners by the Curriculum Office and our Delaware County Intermediate Unit Consortium teachers. So like the special education teachers, the ESL teachers are providing synchronous learning sessions for direct support for individualized learning, which meant. for direct support for individualized learning, which meant professional development on synchronous learning platforms which had never before been used. Our parents showed tremendous support during this time. They were helping their kids to access the targeted review assignments. They were asking questions, and they really held tight while we prepared for the next phase. I mean, we've always known that our parents are second to none, but we were reminded of this as soon as the crisis began. With continuous offers of support, encouraging emails, messages of care and concern, we are so grateful for the grace and patience our community has shown us in these trying times. Now, just this past Monday, the flexible instruction plan launched. With the review and maintenance phase over, our teachers could now engage students in new learning, and they were anxious to do so. Teachers created and released targeted video lessons, activities and assignments. They held regular office hours for student questions. They continued to collaborate with colleagues in Zoom meetings, they answered parent and student emails, and they started prepping for the next week of learning, all while continuing to grow their knowledge of online learning platforms and technology options. It was a busy week for them and for other staff members as well. Our behavioral health staff provided and participated in tutorials on remote risk assessment processes. They researched and implemented key behavioral health and social skill interventions. They provided group and individual counseling, they did that either by phone or by Zoom, and that depended on the student or the parent preference. Our related services, the lecture speech, your OT, PT, our BCBA's, they developed proficiencies through professional development in something called teletherapy, and they implemented that with the students on an ongoing basis. Our school psychologists identified and implemented online methods for the completion of parent-staff input for those evaluations. They researched appropriate assessments and rating scales that can be completed now virtually. And they too provided individual counseling through phone or Zoom. Our nurses consulted with families to facilitate homebound processes and with staff and administration related to the updates about COVID-19. Our social workers reviewed caseloads and gathered additional information from school teams and families in order to connect families to appropriate community-based resources during the closure. They met with the directors of local food banks to ensure continuity of services for families and to direct donations accordingly. Partnering with local faith-based communities, they adopted families and provided foods, and they coordinated the donation of gift cards to grocery stores. Now, this was prior to the breakfast and lunch services that Lisa spoke about that were offered through the federal waiver approval. So what that means is during that time, they were contacting families, they were assessing needs, they were coordinating delivery of gift cards, they were making no contact deliveries, and they were coordinating with transportation to do food drop-offs. Our school counselors were very busy as well. They developed K-12 mental health resources to be included in e-blasts to family and to be posted on WSSD websites. They participated in a tutorial on assessing risk virtually. They delivered counseling and check-in sessions in Zoom and phone conferences. They served as a liaison between students and colleges about changes to admissions processes due to the school closures. And they assisted teachers in contacting students and families who have not yet logged in, and we have some of that. In all of this, we realized how important it would be to check in with our stakeholders to see how it was going. So we also crafted a parent survey for feedback about the flexible instruction plan. And right now, we have over 1,100 responses. That survey closes at midnight tonight so that we can immediately analyze the data from the first week and make adjustments where necessary. We will continue to rely on feedback information as the weeks continue. So I urge everyone to please check email and the website for these important announcements for subsequent surveys. We are really proud of our community of teachers, our staff members, our parents, our administrators, and our students who are hanging in there. So for the second half of the presentation, I would like to share some stories from behind the scenes. So here's what some of our specialists had to say. "This new way of doing business has required me to think about how to be leaner and more concise with directions and the delivery of new information, and to put more emphasis on the connections with students." This has been so unpredictable. Some students who we thought may struggle are thriving in this new model. Then there are students who typically do well academically, who are resilient and are struggling to adapt. It's very clear they are missing the schedules, the sports, the activities, and the adults that provide structure in their lives. And from the school's social worker, "We are now looking at a new set of needs, making use of different resources. We need to consider the families that have lost jobs and food services and daycare centers. We need to think about the healthcare workers working 65 hours a week and cannot make it to the food pickups." Our teachers have learned some lessons too along the way. Kelly Kane, a first-grade teacher at SRS, she spent an hour and a half prepping, videoing, uploading, and getting a lesson on OA, OW vowel patterns. Then, when she watched the lesson, she realized the screen mirrored her rather than flipping the image. Can you see what's wrong with her lesson? Yeah, so needless to say, she started over. Bill Roth and Bach, a physics teacher at Strathhaven High School, wanted to use a YouTube video for his honors physics class with a document camera, that's called a ladybug. And he borrowed that from his classroom, he hooked it up to his desktop PC at home. Now, he's delivered this particular content six times a year for the past 13 years, and he was really confident that he could get through the recording in just one take. But just in case, he got up at 5:30 in the morning to record the lesson, specifically so he wouldn't have his children in the background, which is a great plan. But apparently, Bill's computer, Zoom, and the document camera were not getting along that morning. So when he finally had it figured out, perfectionist Bill did three takes instead of one. But by take number three, his kids were awake, and now they were making guest appearances and giggling at dad's attempt at video making. So now he knows to allot triple the amount of time and to set aside the perfect take for a good enough version. Chad Mitchell, math teacher at Strathhaven Middle School, used smart notebook files and Zoom videos, determined to learn how to have his picture included in the video. You can see it up there in the corner. So he said the weirdest thing was that he was so used to asking questions and having students respond that he started to feel like he was talking to himself and wondering if he was going crazy. But he knows that's not the case because he had a lot of parents reach out with emails saying how much the kids appreciated seeing him on the other side of the video. And I want to take you to some of our non-teaching heroes as well. So the mail keeps on rolling in. So here is our business manager Martha Q, sorting the endless piles of mail. And she is doing that all while keeping payroll and accounts going with the support of her fantastic support team. Also, our nutrition group. So this is our nutrition group in action where they have been serving 300 children a day for a total of 6,500 meals and counting. Now, nothing could have been accomplished these past four weeks without the help of our technology department. A.J. Citroni worked miracles every single day. He did that with the support from Caitlin Locke, Mary Figaro, Megan McCullough, Gina Ross, the secretarial staff, the technology support staff, and our transportation department. This Herculean effort by a group of dedicated people brought order to what could have been chaos and ensured equitable access to the new flexible instruction model by assessing needs through teacher and parent surveys, tracking technology needs, and coordinating pickups and deliveries when necessary. They built teacher accounts for CSO, they created video tutorials, they researched and maintained technical how-tos and FAQs for users, and they distributed 314 Chromebooks, 70 of them to teachers. They hosted four technology pickup days and one delivery day in which two bus drivers delivered devices directly to families who could not pick up. They prepared 124 devices for loan to district employees. That's in addition to the 70 I mentioned before. That preparation included cleaning devices and creating an inventory of all of the loans, an extraordinary effort. Our community members spent hours making masks for essential workers in our community, and we cannot thank you enough for your donation of time. Mets, who is our contracted cleaning company, has been in on a regular basis to clean and disinfect areas being used by our essential employees. In addition to cleaning schools, fun fact, Mets also cleans medical facilities, and that tells us they have the expertise needed to properly clean our facilities against the spread of COVID-19. They have also been extensively cleaning areas that have limited access when school is in session, and they have regularly offered helping hands in any way needed, such as the distribution of technology, the distribution of food, moving supplies, all of that. Although we do not have pictures to accompany the ways in which we have risen to the challenge, it is important to mention the following, that HR has been continually supporting the needs of our staff, all while doing a full-court press on spring hiring for the 2020-2021 school year. Our registration and student information system staff are still registering students and will continue to do so, particularly next year's kindergartens. They are supporting the needs of our parents, and they're also completing regulatory reports, all of which still need to be filed. Even though we have powered down most of our essential mechanical systems, operation staff members are monitoring our critical systems on a daily basis. Every room is physically being checked for leaks, mechanical failures, and more. All of our HVAC systems are being monitored remotely on a daily basis. And any project or repair that has to be done is being scheduled and still overseen by the operations department. And as for our administrators, well, questions keep coming. And administration has been meeting almost daily to find answers, such as Zoom allowable uses, appropriate responses to student online behaviors, what to do when a student has not logged on or submitted any work. They've been attending virtual countywide meetings with other districts for guidance. They hold weekly faculty and department meetings and regular and special education. They're responding to emails and requests from parents throughout every single day. They've also been working to stay current on the latest updates from the state. For example, the state required completion of a continuity of education plan, which was handed down last week, and that we are just about ready to submit. So it's a lot, I know, and it's a lot to take in. With the recent announcement from Governor Wolf to close schools for the rest of the school year, we will re-explore and add to our plan for the remaining weeks of distance education. We know now, and maybe we always know, that while the challenges set before us as a result of COVID-19 are individual and unique to each situation, the solutions are discovered when we come together. With creative, thoughtful collaboration, we fully intend to design and redesign as many times as it takes the best way forward for the academic, social, emotional, and mental well-being of our amazing students, and to make sure that we engage in innovative thinking to commemorate the end of the 2019-2020 school year for all of our students. I have a senior graduating this year, and nothing, nothing is breaking my heart more than watching his pain. I would personally like to thank every single member of the Wallingford-Swathmore District family. And that includes, but certainly not limited to, our students and our parents, our support staff, our administration, transportation, operations, HR, the business office, the school board, and our community members who have never lost faith in our ability to meet this crisis with thoughtful decision-making processes. We have not always had the perfect answer, but I believe we have and will continue to work together so that we can rise to all of the challenges to come. Thank you.
Thank you Denise. We appreciate that update and certainly, you know, the incredible commitment of so many people to being adaptable and committing extraordinary hours to standing things up in a quick way. It's hard to, before you go through something like this, I know it's always hard to anticipate every last thing that you'll need to contend with in the moment, and I know that those things just keep on coming. With that, let me see if any board members would like to ask a question. I see Damon. You want to go ahead Damon?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Outstanding. Not so much a question, but a comment. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you and everyone has done. I'll say that my wife has worked as an instructional designer for the past like 10, 12 years at the university level, putting classes into an online format. And she always points out to me that they take two to six months to put it online, to make, to take a class and put it into the online format. So the amount that you have done in this short amount of time is extraordinary. And these are extraordinary times, and I just want to express my appreciation to you and to all of the staff and faculty and staff in the Wallingford-Swathmore School District. It's not been easy, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Ressidy. I really appreciate those thoughts and comments. It means a lot to me.
Other, let's see, I see Marilyn. I see your hand. Marilyn, you may be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to echo what Damon was saying in that the, the variety of tasks that the entire school community has had to take on at a moment's notice is just phenomenal, and I'm really impressed by how well the district has performed and come together, even though, even in my own job, I know that you're daily, the goalposts move, and that can be incredibly frustrating. But I think we're in a good place now, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. I appreciate those comments. I think it means a lot to people to know, and the truth of the matter is, you know, we're educators for a reason. It's because we really care about kids, and so when you wake up in the morning and you remember that's why you're doing it, it makes it a lot easier.
I see we have a hand up from Jen. Make sure I mute yourself.
Thanks, Dave. Ms. Cittarelli-Jones, I also want to say thank you, not only as a school board member, but also as a mother who has been instrumental at home with my kids. Thank you for putting all the time in. I think that when the pieces fell away in mid-March to people that didn't have a background, scene, view, things felt really silent. And because I'm one of the newer members on the school board, I knew what a whirlwind. You and so many other people who have put so much effort into this, I knew what a whirlwind it was. So thank you for that. I also want to ask, I know that you put out a survey to the parents about the flexible instruction. Is there also a survey that was put out to the teachers? So you can get their feedback about whether they think a certain platform is effective with their students, whether it's providing the connection they want, if they like it, if they think it's useful. I know what the people who own the platforms would say, but I'm wondering when it goes into real practice, what, if you're going to get feedback from those teachers too, and if you're going to have the person power to go through so many responses, which it sounds like you have so many responses.
Yeah. Well, thank you first for your comments, and it's really good questions. So the teachers at the high school level, I can almost answer it by level. The teachers at the high school level have been using Google Classroom for a while since they had their one-to-one initiative. So they were almost able to hit the ground running right away, and already had sort of bought into that. At the middle school with the promise, maybe down the road of a one-to-one, I think a lot of the teachers were very excited to learn about Google Classroom if they weren't using it already, and really started embracing this as an opportunity to learn about it. At the elementary level, Google Classroom was brand new, and I think that was tricky for them because they have so many subjects that they're teaching to their groups. So planning for instruction across buildings, because you know, they're across three buildings, and learning the platform, I think, was tricky. And CSO is used in our K-1, 2 group, and so CSO is a platform that some of them knew, but not all of them knew. So there was probably the biggest learning curve in elementary. I attended every single elementary collaboration planning session, and I held sessions with the leaders of our team leaders for those grades. And they have been a phenomenally collaborative group. Caitlin Locke has been working every single day with those teachers to get them on board. So the way we set up feedback for them is our one-to-one meetings that I am in and that the principals are also in. And then we have set it up with the union membership for them to have opportunities to go to their union building members and then to take it to John Lynch, who is our union president, and then he and I meet each week to go over the feedback for that. In fact, we have one coming up tomorrow for feedback from teachers. So that's been the way that we're doing it. It's a little more personalized than a survey, and teachers are candid. Our teachers are candid.
And then Jen, did you have a follow-up or? We have another question from.
No, I do have other questions about CSO. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask them, or if when. So about the CSO platform specifically, is this, is this something that we had for K through 2 before this happened?
We had it in place before it happened as an option for teachers who wanted to do something along those lines. It was not a required platform.
Okay, and is it something that, is it, is it one of, where does, I guess, where does it sit? How did they decide on this, and where does it sit when it, or compare to the other platforms that are available for this age group, K to 2, K to 3?
Yeah, I think because we were looking for something with some immediacy, as you can imagine. This was something that was already familiar to a couple of teachers, and they were.
familiar to a couple of teachers and they were already using it and they were providing it to us for free into next year. And so this isn't something that's just going to fill the gap for now. And it was one of the ways that we got teachers to buy in to, to, to learning about it and really getting behind it because they will be able to use it in their classrooms next year as well. And we'll be able to maybe do some flip classroom type of ideas. So that became one of the forerunners, both in our district and in the county. So at those countywide district meetings, the, the name of the game was CSO for K-1-2 and people were really excited about it. And so we decided, since we had some early adopters of that platform, that we would go all in, especially with the, with the free access to it through next year. So.
Okay. I do see that that's something that's on the agenda later on tonight is whether or not we will keep that through next year. And obviously if we ended up in this position again for any reason, it would be, as long as the students and the teachers have liked it, it would be an advantage. But if they're back in the classroom, is there, I, I think with everyone craving so much human connection, is there a reason that teachers would still use these platforms in the classroom from kid, for kids as young as up to eight years old, or I guess seven years old, eight years old?
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly something that we have to really explore and think about. Our K-1-2 teachers, in fact, really all of our elementary teachers, that human connection and that work with students without a screen in between them is probably the most important thing to them. I don't see the addition of CSO as being something that will overtake our instruction. I think it will just be a support for instruction. And I think it's interesting because kids are going to learn that particular platform at home now. And then to be able to see it continue into next year and they'll feel comfortable and confident with it. I do think that our, our elementary students especially, it's not the idea of flip classrooms so much for them, although for some of those kids, they can learn something through something like CSO, maybe a video embedded on it, maybe something where the teacher has written directions. So it's different access points for learning. That can be helpful for kids. But as, you know, as like the mainstay of our, of our instruction, I cannot see the day when that would be true.
Okay. I guess since we've got into it very quickly, do you see an advantage to looking for other platforms? If we had to keep a technological platform for kids that young for next year?
Well, I don't know what they are yet. With, with an incoming director of technology, they'll probably be a person who has a lot of expertise in that area. But I do think that there are going to be platforms that are going to be developed out there that, that may be better. I mean, what's happening right now is people are inventing things left and right to fill that gap. And I mean, even just now as an example, I got something in an email yesterday put together by Justin's, who does class rings and class pictures about how they have already put together how to do an online virtual graduation ceremony. And they've put that all together and they've put that out to people. So people are inventing things non-stop. So I think CSO is the name of the game right now. Is it the best, most robust? Is it the thing we're sticking with? I mean, we're, we're going to take the best as they come, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I think Chapin had her hand up next and then Kelly after that.
Dr. Jones, I just wanted to thank you for that incredibly thorough presentation yourself. I'm sure that the work that you put into that is emblematic of all the work that you were representing in the presentation itself. And it was incredibly thorough, kind of knocked my socks off. So you did justice. And thank you for bringing us all up to speed. It just is incredible what everyone's doing. And I wanted to recognize your presentation specifically because it was pretty incredible.
Thank you so much, doctors. I mean, I really appreciate that. It's, some things are labors of love. And in this case, that was true because I am so proud of our kids and I'm proud of our teachers and our parents. I'm so proud of our administrators that you guys are getting my glimpse behind the scenes. But every meeting that I have left, whether it's with the second graders or the English department at the high school, just I am moved by how passionate people are about making this work. It's, it's extraordinary. I'm almost lucky to have been able to be here to see it in action and be a part of it.
It's amazing. I feel the same way. It's incredible. Thank you.
All right. I think we had Kelly next.
Yes. And I'll, I'll make this brief, I hope. So again, Dr. Siderelli Jones, thank you so much to you and to everyone. It truly has been remarkable. If you think about how long it would have taken your average business to do this and a school district pulled it off this fast, it's, it's just remarkable. Back to the, the CSO question, I know that platform is the one that I have heard the most feedback about. And I think for everybody, it's because using a platform and the youngest children is by far the most difficult as a parent. As a platform that had the least amount of usage, I would say probably in the, in the district as well. At the same time, I'm, I'm interested and we don't need to discuss this tonight, but as we go forward, I'm familiar with the platform through my sister-in-law, who is a teacher in another district, who has used it for quite a long time as a regular part of administering their curriculum, thinks it's phenomenal. And I do wonder to some extent, is our early and very quick introduction to this and our district as parents is the experience that we're having in some ways limited by the fact that we had to go live with it very, very quickly. And, you know, to, to the extent that we continue to use it, I'm, I'm going to imagine there might be other features and things in terms of how you access the different components that can be improved over time, but to get something live in two weeks, we don't have all the bells and whistles enabled is my, my guess. And I, I don't need to belabor it right now. It's something I'd like to talk about a little bit in the future. If you have a short comment now, that would be great, but we can talk again as time goes.
Yeah, I, you know, CSO was new to me and I was very grateful and lucky that Caitlin Locke was the teacher on special assignment to the curriculum office because as a computer science teacher, she was able to jump in and start learning that. I've never seen somebody learn at the rate that Caitlin Locke did to try to understand CSO to get in. She started making tutorials, FAQs. She is regularly attending every single elementary collaboration planning session so that she can be an online support for whether it's Zoom or CSO, having just learned it herself, having, having never used it as a teacher. So she's discovering new things every day. I rely heavily on her ability to, to get to know that platform and to be able to give the recommendation about whether or not this is a good one, whether or not we're using it to its full capability. She's quite extraordinary. We're lucky to have her. And I think that when she starts reporting back on that, we're, we're going to really know if we're using CSO fully, if it's, if it's the best platform for us to use moving forward. Right now, as I said before, a lot of the county is using that. And so there's a lot of collaborative discussion around that among the districts. So I'll, I'll keep my eye on it certainly. And I can, I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline if you want to.
Thank you very much.
So I don't see any other board members with hands up at the moment. I'll just pause for a moment to see if anyone else has any questions. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So that takes us to the part of the agenda where we typically have audience recognition for response to items for action on the agenda. I don't believe we have any comments for an item on the agenda. I asked Kelly to be able to review those this evening. Kelly, do we have any for items on the agenda?
We do not.
Okay. All right. So we will move to our first item for action, which is approval of the minutes from the March 9th regular business meeting and the March 12th special meeting. An ISO move. Do we have a second?
Second, Michelle Downey.
I heard a second from Michelle Downey. Any discussion? Okay. So Ms. Klingerman, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Ms. Semino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Downey?
Aye.
Dr. Huff?
Aye.
Mr. Cutis?
Aye.
Mrs. Lentz?
Jennifer Lentz. I vote aye for the March 9th meeting and I abstained for the March 12th meeting, which I did not attend.
Thank you. Mr. Rosetti?
Damon Rosetti, aye.
Mrs. Walkman?
Aye.
Mr. Ballas?
Aye.
Dr. Grandy?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have nine to zero on the March 9th regular business meeting and eight to zero with one extension for the March 12th special meeting. Moving on, we have seven items for action and personnel this evening. Are there any items on the list anyone wants removed to discuss separately? Okay. So let me review these. We have the approval of, and as Dr. Palmer mentioned earlier, we have a lot of personnel movement. So first we have the approval of nine retirements. John Lynch, a high school social studies teacher. Anita Di-Domenico, a fourth grade teacher from NPE. Mary Costello, a reading specialist at SRS. Martha Lambert, Martha Lambertstein, Lambertson, sorry, a media specialist at Wes. Kathleen Gemberling, a school counselor at SRS. Donna Rannieri, a fourth grade teacher at NPE. Stephen O'Keefe, a school counselor at the high school. Candace Purie, a health and PE teacher at the high school. And Theodoro Pasitos, a math teacher at the high school. All of those retirements are effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year. And then we have the approval of seven appointments. And as a note, you'll see on the agenda, some of those are listed as replacing themselves, which means they're transitioning from temporary to permanent positions. So we have Jamie Brigham, an English language arts teacher at the middle school as a short-term substitute. Leslie Labess, an English language arts teacher at the middle school. Sophie Maluski, a second grade teacher at Wes. Sophie Shintalk, a first grade teacher at SRS. Erica Weaver, a school counselor at Wes. Catherine Hopkins, a math teacher at NPE. And Ryan Drum, a custodian at the high school. We have one leave of absence, which is Mary Costello, a reading specialist at SRS. With the approval of two changes of assignment, Tom McLoughlin from a 10 and a half month to a 12-month position. And Kathleen Rikers from instructional sports specialist at SRS to short-term substitute reading specialist. And the details are as noted in the agenda. With the approval of two additions to the 2019-2020 activities supplemental appointments as stipulated in the agenda. We have the approval of two additions to the 2019-2020 winter athletic supplementals as stipulated. And we have the approval of two additions to the 2019-2020 winter athletic supplemental postseason pay as stipulated. And, and as mentioned, all of these are in the section as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Jerry Ballas.
Thank you, Jerry. And do we have a second?
Second, Chapin Semino.
Thank you Chapin. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Klingerman, can you please take a roll call vote?
Dr. Huff, how do you vote, please?
Aye.
Mr. Cutis?
Aye.
Mrs. Lentz?
Jennifer Lentz, aye.
Mr. Orsetti?
Damon Orsetti, aye.
Mrs. Walkman?
Aye.
Mr. Ballas?
Aye.
Ms. Semino?
Aye.
Dr. Danley?
Aye.
And Dr. Grandy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. The items passed nine to zero. So that takes us to curriculum where we have five items for action. We have the approval of the 2019-2020 school year related service provider contracts as stipulated. We have the approval of a 2019-2020 tuition contract as stipulated. With approval for homebound instruction as stipulated. The, the fourth item is that the board has become aware that there is an application for admission of a foreign exchange student into our district. And in light of the worldwide health crisis and concerns over travel, the board moves to suspend its foreign exchange program for the 2020-21 school year. And further, the board directs the administration to contact group-sponsored exchange programs approved by the board to advise them of this change. And then the final item in the section is the approval of an amendment to the 2019-2020 Strathhaven High School Silver Guide, which would remove the requirement for students who are enrolled in advanced placement courses to take the advanced placement exam administered by the college board. All these items in the section are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Cut.
Marilyn Huff.
Thank you, Marilyn. Do we have a second?
Second, Kelly Walkman.
Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion on these items? Okay. Ms. Ms. Klingerman, can you please take a roll call vote?
I guess. Mr. Cutis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Lentz?
Mrs. Lentz, aye.
Mr. Orsetti?
Damon Orsetti, aye.
Mrs. Walkman?
Aye.
Mr. Ballas?
Aye.
Ms. Semino?
Aye.
Dr. Downey?
Aye.
Dr. Huff?
Aye.
Dr. Grandy?
Aye.
Thank you.
The items passed nine to zero. That takes us to finance. We have 14 items for approval in finance. We have the approval of payment of invoices to vendors from February 19th to April 3rd. We have the approval of the treasures report for February 2020. We have the acknowledgement of receipt of the financial statements as stipulated. We have the approval of 2019-2020 budget transfers as stipulated. We have the approval of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget for the 2020-2021 school year as stipulated. We have the approval of the Delaware County Area Technical Schools Budget Resolution for the 2020-2021 school year as stipulated. We have the approval of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement for the 2020-21 school year as stipulated. We have the approval of the nominees listed in the agenda to be elected to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board for a three-year term beginning July 2020 through June 30th, 2023 as stipulated. The approval of an agreement with CSO for online learning for the 2020-2021 school year not to exceed $5,000 as stipulated. With the approval of an agreement with Morefield Communications for a CCTV support agreement for November 2019 through June 2020 at a cost of $10,245. We have the approval of an agreement with Morefield Communications for a CCTV support agreement for the 2020-2021 school year at a cost of $34,575. And then we have the acceptance of a 2019-2020 school safety and security meritorious grant award and the project expenditures covered by said grant in the amount of $40,000 pending receipt of the award letter. And we have the acceptance of a 2019-2020 school safety and security competitive grant and the project expenditures covered by said grant in the amount of $195,000, $195,000 pending receipt of the award letter. And finally, we have the approval to work with PFM Financial Advisors as financial advisor and RBC Capital Markets as underwriter to proceed with an application for a loan with the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority's fixed rate program to refinance outstanding 2020-2012A bonds to achieve net debt service savings. All of these are as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion?
We have a question about one of the items.
If it's okay, we'll take discussion in a moment. If we could start with motions.
So moved, Jerry Ballas.
Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second?
Second, Lawrence Cutis.
Thank you, Larry. So it sounds like we have discussion. Jen, do you want to start?
Yeah. So about letter I with the CSO contract, in light of the fact that, I guess my first, my question is, is that something that we need to vote on now? Because considering, is there a time, a time issue with that? Considering we haven't received the results of the family surveys, we're still getting feedback from the teachers. It's in the neighborhood of $5,000 and we're not really sure what the current most attractive platforms are for kids in that age range. It seems to me like there's more information that may support a vote for that, but it seems like we're. It seems to me like there's more information that may support a vote for that, but it seems like we're missing a lot of information right now. And so I guess, like I said, I'm wondering if we could get some more information and put that vote off for the time being.
Dr. Palmer, can you weigh in or Dr. Siderelli Jones?
Actually, I am going to bounce over to Dr. Siderelli Jones and also to Ms. Q. I am not 100% sure if that is required for us to be able to go in and use the platform right now.
Ms. Q. might have somewhere information about that piece of it. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that our use of it this year is, the free usage of it this year is contingent on that $5,000 relative to other things, $5,000. Is is pretty reasonable, but as you said, it's, we don't have that feedback, that full feedback yet. We haven't analyzed that data, so I really do see parts of it, but maybe Ms. Kuna is a little bit more about the actual contract.
My understanding that they are granting us use of the platform from when we started to use it through the end of the school year contingent upon us approving the contract with, for the 2020 2020 2021 year.
And when does that contract need to be approved? Because it sounds as though, even though we'd be voting, it's a bit of a formality at this point because the agreement's sort of already been made.
We
But when we decided to use it.
We are already using the platform, so their expectation is that we are following through with the contract.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused how I, maybe I'm the only one here, but I'm a little bit confused. It sounds as though the decision has been made in this respect.
Yeah, I think maybe, Dr. Palmer, maybe you could weigh in, but I think, you know, under the circumstances where the team needed to stand up something quickly. I think what essentially transpired is needing to enter into an agreement before this board meeting in order to stand up learning with our K through two students, but Dr. Palmer, is that your understanding of the issue?
Yes, it is. We would not have had a platform for K to two. And this is the one that the educators had decided was the best one to suit our needs.
So going back to the question that I had asked before during the flexible learning instruction. It's my understanding that CSO was already in place before we started researching for the flexible learning. It's just that it wasn't being widely used through with K through 12. Wasn't that the case? I felt that's what you had told me.
Yeah, I'm fairly certain that the, there were some early adopters of that that knew of CSO and used it. I really would have to trace it back. And I apologize, there were so many things happening in those early weeks. The nuances of all of them are really hard to nail them all down at one time. But we heard of CSO early. It could have bubbled up from the teachers. I feel like that's the case. But what I do know is that when I put that out to the curriculum directors in the county, a lot of them were using that, and a lot of them were supporters of CSO. When they said we would have free access, as Dr. Palmer said, we had no other plan in place. We knew that Google Classroom was going to be way too complex, way too robust for our earliest learners. That seemed like a favorable choice to make at the time. Whether or not it's going to be, you know, bring us home next year and be the most amazing thing, I certainly couldn't say, but I do know that for now, it seemed to be the most user-friendly, had the most support from other curriculum directors, fell within a reasonable price for 18 months of use, and teachers were familiar with it.
Okay, so I just want to, I'm going to make a motion to table that particular vote, and the reason is because it sounds as though the way I read it is that we would be approving something going forward, and it sounds instead, and this is not by way of criticism. I can't believe the, what you've built in such a short time, so. But from my standpoint of approving something into the next year, I'm going to make a motion to table that so that we can get the answers to the questions that I think are missing maybe for a meeting or two. It sounds like there's a lot we don't know.
I understand, yeah.
I think I see.
There is a motion to table on the table right now, and it needs a second or it dies.
Damon Orsetti, I'll second it.
Okay.
There is no discussion at this point. It's just a
Go ahead, Kyle.
There is no discussion on a motion to table. It is simply a vote at this point.
Okay, Ms. Klingerman, can you please take a roll call vote?
To be clear, an aye is to table, correct?
Yes. To table item aye. Mrs. Lentz?
Mrs. Lentz, aye.
Mr. Orsetti?
Damon Orsetti, aye.
Mrs. Walkman?
Mrs. Walkman, nay.
Mr. Ballas?
Jerry Ballas, nay.
Ms. Semino? Dr. Downey?
Nay.
Dr. Huff?
Nay.
Mr. Cutis?
Nay.
And Dr. Grandy?
Nay. So I think the, do I have the vote count as failing two to seven?
Yes, Dr. Grandy.
Okay. So I think we can reopen discussion at this point. Is that correct, Kyle, on other items?
Yes, unless there's no more discussion, at which point you'd simply move on to the
Okay, I think our raised hands disappeared, so I think they were about that item. I'll just pause for a moment to make sure I see no other hands. Okay, so now let's move on to asking Ms. Klingerman to do a roll call vote on all the measures, on all the items from the section.
Okay, for items in finance, items A through N. Mr. Orsetti, how do you vote?
Damon Orsetti, aye.
Mrs. Walkman?
Aye.
Mr. Ballas?
Jerry Ballas, aye.
Ms. Semino?
Aye.
Dr. Downey?
Aye.
Dr. Huff?
Aye.
Mr. Cutis?
Aye.
Mrs. Lentz?
Mrs. Lentz, nay. I vote aye on all the items except for nay on aye.
And Dr. Grandy?
Aye.
Kyle, can we split vote counts on items in the way we just voted?
We can. In the future, it probably would be easier to remove the one that was otherwise going to be tabled so that we could take that as a separate vote, but it can be voted as one with, just reflecting that it passed with the exception of aye, which passed eight to one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have nine to zero on all the measures except aye, which carries eight to one.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving on, now's the time during the agenda where we typically have audience recognition for response to topics that are not on the agenda. Kelly, do we have any comments for the public that we received before five o'clock that we could acknowledge at this time?
Yes, we do. We had one, and so I could read that in full if we would like. Or summarize.
Maybe summarize. It'll be entered in the record, right, Kyle?
Yes, regardless of whether it's summarized or read in full, it will be part of the record.
Okay, the the summary version, do I, should I state who it's from also?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is a comment from Bill Foster, 412 Strathhaven Avenue in Swathmore. And Mr. Foster comments on the current coronavirus and the importance of being careful about a continuation to regular schooling in buildings. I am summarizing here a lot, but in the basically, he's asking us to proceed with caution at the point that we consider reopening schools, asking us to consider that that may not be safe until well into the fall when repeated access to testing is available and when a vaccine is available. That summarizes the content of his his comments.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And I do want to mention again to members of the public, though the, you know, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, though we're getting close to adjourning the meeting, again, anyone who threw out the meeting up to the conclusion can leave a message at 610-892-3470, extension 1102. And Kelly, that was the only comment, correct? You said?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So that takes us to old business. Do we have any old business to discuss this evening? Okay. Any new business? I think Jen, is your hand up for a new business item?
I was wondering if the student representative would be joining us in the future, although I know she does not have activities to speak of. Perhaps she could convey some sentiments of the student community to us, and that would be valuable. Any ideas people have to commemorate events that are lost, et cetera? Perhaps she's just absent today, but if she it was not going to be present, maybe it would be valuable to have her present.
Great, thank you.
The second point I wanted to make is that about the travel deposits, which we received some information about those. I know the school has been great about reaching out to the travel agency and really proactive in that sense. I also was wondering if we could get a status for families, maybe up and coming. And also if we could just so that we are as aggressive as we possibly can be about seeking any money that's possible to return, and I'm not sure if that is a possibility. But while I know that COVID is often not, or certain pandemics are often not covered within a variety of different contracts, there are other nuances that underlie the contract language that can be relevant, so perhaps our own attorneys can take a look at that so that the families can have more of a definitive answer about whether or not they will see any, any portion of that money coming back to them. Maybe we could status that at a future meeting.
Sure. Dr. Palmer, do you have anything to comment on that this evening, or is that something you could update us on at our meeting, which I believe, next meeting, I believe in two weeks?
I can update you at the next one. I don't have anything more than the board has at this moment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for everyone participating remotely, and thank you very much to everyone out in our community who's watching this evening online. You know, we appreciate your flexibility and engaging with us. And again, I want to encourage you future meetings again to, you know, if you want to avail yourself of the opportunities to make comment, we're certainly welcome that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.